Pledge of Lee. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It does.
Thank you. Uh, roll call.
Okay, for the last time. I think. You gotta get it in this meeting. Councilmember, Ra.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pleasant, who appears to be absent from this meeting. Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle.
Over here.
Mayor Keel.
Here.
Stu Rupp, Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
And Stu Rupp, Aaron, which I will not see.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We have a call. Uh, item C is approval with eighty minutes from our city council work session on September thirteenth. And the second one, record city council meeting. Been moved by Fisher.
No. Except that, under my council comments at the end, I might sound like I gave some sense if you added to it. That seeing him on Zoom, he looked a certain size and not the other side, you were. Throw that in there if you go that way.
Hold on, Mr. Jones.
I started at the top page four. I just made sure my comments come in. But you're going to be here.
Okay, other comments on the meetings. Well, we have one. Your roll call. Three of the. Two minutes. Said also.
The removal should probably. That was. He was, um, I think the chief was on the promoted, but I almost. I'm not sure who else was, but I know. I think Scott.
Um, please follow up, Ms. Jones. All sense of.
Ra.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Pleasant.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yep.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carriers, I do. We have no pre-reading suspicion. But, uh, I'd like to take the opportunity, if it's okay, to, uh, read a thank you proclamation for Carol Jones. Yes, sir. Man here to put us on board since. Serving as clerk, serving as a court secretary. Please, Jones, I'm going to read this aloud for you. All of you there say thank you for asking, John. Whereas Carol Jones has been a lifelong Dexter resident. And whereas when Carol Jones retired from National City Bay, IDP and City Bay. In two thousand eight, she began her career with the Village of Dexter through her election to the position of village clerk. And whereas Carol Jones continued in that role, serving as the first city clerk following adoption of city charter on November two thousand fourteen, March two thousand seventeen. Whereas Carol Jones served as a recording secretary to the city council, planning commission, downtown development authority, and city charter commission. And whereas Carol Jones has further demonstrated her commitment to the community through participation in community organizations such as Dexter Historical Society, the Downtown Development Authority, Dexter Chamber of Commerce, and Saint Andrews Church of Christ. Now therefore, the city of Dexter will plan its thanks and sincere appreciation to Carol Jones for her years of service to the citizens of Dexter. Carol, on behalf of all of us, thank you very much. Everything is going to be missed.
I, I have a couple of totems for you guys. This one's for, for the office of Justin. He got a look at it now. And this is for you, Sean, studying up on the history of Dexter, particularly with the year nineteen seventy-four, the dirt and the animals. With his village president. So it's a learning session for you.
All right, I understand. So everybody else.
I told you you'd be on back someday.
That's great. Thank you, girl.
You're welcome. Tradition. Yes. And thank you very much. It's been, it's been very entertaining and interesting. And I always feel like I'm a part of a whole group here, but I don't have, I don't have a vote, so I don't have to. Put myself up. I have a opinion, but I don't have a vote.
Item E is approval of agenda.
I'm moving through the agenda as presented. I can.
Well, I want to have this, we have an exchange kid who's going to be in the homecoming parade. That's not a special situation.
Okay, and now it's on the agenda. So you know, uh, start with this color.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Ra.
Yes.
Pleasant.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carriers, uh, under official agenda and public hearing standard. We don't have any C notary. If you have any, I think anybody in the audience, but we do have several people participating on Zoom. If anyone would like to speak this evening virtually, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you on YouTube. Calling in, you did star nine on your cell phone. Not sleeping, any one of them?
Well, like, hey, have we been trying to hear us? I, I, I love Dan and pretty good.
Hey, Jim, you could hear us? Good person? Can you give us a thumbs up? Okay, great. Great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll let the record reflect, there's no non-range participation this evening. Uh, item A is communications. The comments on our upcoming meetings. There's one of the, uh. For the vision, uh, in the subway. That will pay if changes in base. We'll move on to I then. Which is our report, first report, beginning from our public services, we're then a, a report in town. Questions on. Item I one. We just thought, uh, let us know that, uh, Dexter Crossing Roadwork is moving on recently. Uh, they had a rainy delay on Saturday. So they're looking to finish up either Wednesday or Thursday.
Looks really nice.
So now, Susan, you over there?
Yes.
Look really nice?
Look what.
Good. Yeah, it's a kidsy too, huh? Yeah. Okay, cool. Okay, then we'll move down to I two. Our community votes, Michelle. Good evening.
How is everyone tonight? Nice, non-raining evening. So before we go into the updates which you already have, um, does anybody have any questions for me on my report or the supplemental? So the only update post-supplemental is that the trees aren't being piped tomorrow. We have three additional, um, locations and they need to have a mistick. So, uh, probably end of this week, beginning of next week, it, it, it'll be taken care of then. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
What question for Sean? So we are, please, we are on. The next up is our written chair report. And I did refer the sheriff and ask, uh, to schedule some time to come to a free meeting. And definitely like to meet or go members. This is scheduled. That's on the sheriff's report. We're out of some man report, yes. So you have my initial report, something. Um. The only thing that I have there is, uh, the, uh, during my white, East Coast, uh, starting October seventh through the sixteenth. So I will be speaking virtually at the next meetings. Um, but, uh, we'll be getting up to Boston and Washington DCs and the suburbs of that, all of them. It's all part of looking forward to it.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anything else special to this one? Um, so I was going to set up a draft in the prior to the council before I said, uh, the printer. Um, we have, you know, no park day scheduled for October twenty-fourth. Um, we have our fall cleanup day coming on October eighteen, but our company fall day, I don't use it as issue. So choose. Um, we'll be starting a lead collection here in a couple of weeks. We have the airport here, they're used to say a science and sport on Saturday, October second. It's coming Saturday. It's going to be a fun park after half the day. So if anybody wants to stop by. Have a lot of fun. My, those are some big things. What was the date of the? Uh, October eighteenth. The, the other item was, uh, in twenty nineteen and in prior years, we had Halloween, uh, for tree hours. Um, we've released something for five thirty to seven fifteen. And we, last year because of COVID, we modified to five to seven. And I wanted to get a sense of how far the others are at. We've been at five to seven or we've been to five thirty to seven thirty. Um, so it's been a couple of days for your next week.
I like the daylight of five to seven.
I do think five could be hard for people who work though and get their kids out. And for people who work and to be home to hand out candy.
I'd be comfortable with five to eight. We've had a rough year. Let's get more candy.
Uh, it is the.
No, well, I guess. I'll speak to my original comment on Sunday. Yeah.
I'll put it in next act for five to seven and I'll put it in. In the newsletter for five to seven. Um, one question, I can't remember. Did we decide to, um. Do something with Jim Cheryl? Uh, modifications for that process? We didn't. We want to, we want to have that discussed in a superior, but is staff want to shift that around or?
Sean, would you say it again? I think I can give you that.
I'm sorry, Paul, on, on page, uh, thirty-three of the pack.
Okay.
Under Justin's report of ongoing projects.
Okay.
There was a request, um. Submitted by Jim Cheryl, that we look at how we build water and sewer during the winter months. Um, essentially, the request suggested that. We, uh. The sewer months should be. Not based upon water, not based upon prior sewer years or something like that. I think that's exactly something that I think there should be discussed. We owe an answer to that.
So also I did talk briefly with Dan, uh, if we haven't. Dug into the whole lot, but I know that our goal of years has been to get away from estimating, to move towards a thing one to three. And, um, I, I don't think he's a fan of moving towards estimating. Uh, that's something that we can get around to talk about.
More, more than solving it today. I just want to know if we have a plan to talk about some. Say what's scheduled to talk about.
That, I just wanted to clarify for those who haven't been following. We already have a process where folks can get a separate meter for their hose. Which is absolutely accurately measured and they pay a different rate because there's no sewer coming out of that. So it seems like we've already got the thing, what, if folks, you have to pay to get the other tack or the other meter, right?
Again, I just want to make sure that we're not letting the questions of their most, if staff have an opinion or your opinion.
I can, I can break that for a discussion, like, discuss that as a second recommendation.
Those are the only questions I have on. Uh, Justin, for today, do you have any questions for Justin? Okay, we are, quickly on to the top page three of the agenda. On my report. I don't have too much to comment on down in the report. Just wanted to expand a little, uh, maybe I need to get the shelf. I, I was not, I had to do the DDA just before they determined what steps that would take. The DDA, most of its leadings, um, a couple of days ago, it's been talking about potential next step for the thirty, forty-five Broad Street property. And, um. And I believe that they threw your work in it, not voted on action. If they voted on it, then you tell council if they did it in light of the letter to Norfolk.
So the DDA decided.
Whatever your number was.
As long as you can hear me.
A little louder.
I'm sorry?
A little louder.
Paul, I can speak a little louder. Maybe here's the right one, Mr. Jones. Thanks, Michelle.
No problem. All right. So the DDA, after reviewing the Norfolk letter, which indicated that they were. Asking for mutual withdrawal for buildings one and two, but insinuating that they would like to move forward with three if the city and DDA were open to that. The DDA decided that they would like to go back out for another potentially RFP. They've directed me to revise the RFP, um, that, that they used when they selected Norfolk homes back in twenty seventeen. And I'm currently working on that revision, but I will be sitting down, their other direction was to bring the thirty, forty-five Broad Street Committee together. And to review the suggested revisions that I have, take their input and then bring that, that final draft to the DDA for their, uh, review, discussion, and determination before making a recommendation to city council. The thirty, forty-five Broad Street Committee, since we have new people on board, consists of Sean, Donna, and Zach as part of the economic development preparedness committee. Then there is Doug Finn, who's the chair of the DDA. There's Chet Hill on planning commission and Karen Roberts, who's on planning commission. Scott Stewart was also, when he was on planning commission, but as of right now, that position has not been filled. Don Darnell is the other downtown development, uh, authority, uh, board of director that is on the committee.
Thursday, Thursday at three.
It's Thursday at three. Yes, thank you. That meeting has been scheduled. I will have the revision ready for you all. Yeah. And it, it is in person here, but there's also a link for anyone that can't participate.
Thanks, Michelle, for giving that. Um, and I will also be out of town on, uh, April eleventh and just be virtual. So. Just find out how it works if you accidentally are there. If that becomes unclear. For the reason, presumably, they asked Paul to help lead through the agenda and, um. Just to have this again for the virtual, I'll still have to be able to stand out here, but find out and test it from the other side. Any questions for me? If you haven't been, last plug here, if you haven't been. Inside the Montreux Theater. Well, just, it's really cool, visible and the theater is awesome. But I don't know if you remember the last one. But basically. My wife and I, uh, went down Thursday night. It's time. Really cool to meet the director of the city, yeah. Dinner or something. Talk about town next day. Very fun part of it, so. Okay, we're down to consent agenda.
I'm moving through the items on the consent agenda, uh, four items, bills and payroll amount of two hundred ninety-three dollars, eight hundred and thirteen, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. The homecoming grade road closure, the holiday hustle road closure, and the proposal from Asti Environmental to perform soil sampling not to exceed twenty-five thousand, five hundred.
Motion by Fisher, the second. Second, I agree. Ms. Jones, please follow up.
Yes. Fisher. Yes. Griffin.
Yeah.
Pleasant.
Yes.
Ra.
Yeah.
Michelle.
Yep.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carriers. This is item eighty-one. Consideration for setting a public hearing for our ethics and content of interest for us. So, uh, Scott is here. Uh. From the last meeting, um, Scott cracked at, uh, redlining. The previous version of the public address ordinance. And, uh, that's, so it's in this chapter, page seventy-five. So Scott, if you wanted to say anything or if you wanted to sort of questions. Well, let's sit there, we've got a motion for.
We'll just have public hearing for October twenty-fifth.
For. Thank you.
And to clarify with this version with the revisions for the ZBA stuff to be added to it.
Set section four, the entire section four, is that what it was?
I believe.
So that the DDA stuff is not the gap. So where would that appropriately go? So, Michelle's second by Pleasant. Thank you both. Okay, we're talking, we're talking about section four point one to four point three that's on page. I think that's.
Yep.
And why all of it to be at? Was, was the appropriate, uh, changes from zoning administrator?
Yeah.
Everybody else have a word?
Why did we add this?
I'll take a crack at it.
Okay, what's that?
Um, so I'll say my experience as a, a day worker for planning and zoning is we get more detailed with conflicts of interest because it's physical property that we're always dealing with. And this is very, very similar to conflict of interest in bylaws and rules of procedure that I've used. And where this works nicely is, so the process in here, uh, and it's mostly the process. Uh, the four point, or no?
And we're adding it because, I guess that there's the process.
Yep.
You're adding, adding it because you think we didn't have enough definition or?
Well, mostly because if, if I'm not sure there's a conflict, the previous ordinance, the previous draft was really big and cumbersome required going with this board of ethics and getting opinion from attorney and all this stuff. And this is basically say, hey, guys, I have a kid who's in the homecoming parade. Is this a conflict? Yes or no? Or I live on the route that the holiday hustle goes through and it's really annoying because I can't get to my house for an hour sometime in the middle of the day. Is that a conflict or not? So that's the biggest part of here is that just you put the question out to the body and the body opens on it. And so it's quick, it's immediate, it's, it's in the daylight, so everyone's aware of it. It, it's worked well as I've seen it.
Thank you.
They were both looking at all of our four. More than four. If it's four two, it's where I talked about the process.
Yeah, actually, I like four two best out of all of them. Well, four two and four three, but I want to get a motion out there for us to start talking about it. So we can pose that to our, our council.
Okay, so we're, at this point, we're. Hopefully, right, actually take action on this. It's a point where we try to do is put everything we want out of the file. So we decided to keep something in there, take it out. Continue to, now, yes, or later, but. That's nothing else. We're all, we're all. See who's back.
Yeah, I would be fine figuring out how we done it, given it's a, it already exists in city procedure. Because basically four one is the shell and minimum, but not actually a limitation. So that definition. Is that restrictive and also is it current and draft as a requirement? And then four two, four three, I think, just further clarify, the process is given that we would need to. The words, yes.
Well, what was the rest? Uh, I should have seen where Scott, if he had anything, if he wanted to say or if anybody has. I'll start with that as a council, any questions?
Can I just say that, um, it's not a question, it's just, where's now section seven? I really appreciate those deadlines. I don't know if I'm the only one who was concerned about personal custody issues with what was in there previously, but I just very happy to see the edit. So thank you. What page? It's on page three.
Welcome. Thanks. Good to see you all. Just very briefly, you know, what, uh, what Justin and I tried to do basically was incorporate the bulk of the comments that you made at the last meeting. We weren't quite sure how to incorporate the ZBA. Language of the existing, uh, document, the prior draft from, you know, the city of Rochester Hills did have a procedure, a procedure, sorry, which is really in section nine. So the question was, well, should we just leave in the ordinance, be the way it was? As it came to us, or should we implement the, the ZBA process? We thought, well, let's just let the city council give us some direction on that. So, but the other things, I think Justin pointed them out in his memo, we took out the whistleblower, um, the board of ethics process, uh, the, the, uh, the provisions related to former employees. Uh, there were like five points. Right, right. As we scale back to disclosure statements. So that was, that was kind of, those are the bulk of the changes, but no, but the, the, the idea of the conflicts is in there, the additional, um, ideas about ethics, uh, for public employees, et cetera. Those are, those remain in there. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, I guess I'll start by, do you think? October twenty-fifth, we have to be in the eighteenth. Will that be enough time to prepare revisions?
I think so. What, to have it be, what's today? Yeah, I would think so. Do you think so, Justin?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have to. Always notice that in the paper. Always notice that in paper, here, pretty short.
All right.
So we can link it to. Send it to the website. And it's.
Next question, the section four, two and four, three in the ZBA. Do you think that outlines a decent process for boards to handle questionable? Areas? Especially four two.
It would seem to me that it would. It sounds like your experience with the ZBA is you're, you think that it's worked pretty well. Uh, I mean, I think the most important point about the conflict of interest issue is that there'd be disclosure. So that everybody knows what the agendas are. You know, if somebody has a conflict that they, you know, proceed with ultimately theoretically, the voters would would. Decide whether they were acting appropriately or not. But yeah, I mean, as long as there's a disclosure and then people discuss it and decide whether there's a conflict, that kind of decision, I think that's the most important point or part of it.
And were there any of the? Oh, no, I got my heart copy out of over here. The 4.1 conflicts of interest, those are very specific to land entitlement. But some of them may make sense because this body is the ultimate decider on some land entitlement questions. I guess is, can you, you think it'd be possible to integrate that without? Muddying the current conflict? Uh, language.
I I think so. You know, conflicts of the conflicts of interest right now in the draft are defined in section four D in the red line, uh, which is pretty broad. If you read that, it's, I think it's trying to be as encompassing as it can be. What I think Justin and I will probably do, we look at that 4.1 from the ZBA, make sure the concepts from 4.1 are included in the existing definition, might have to.
Yeah.
Massage it.
There's, there's some overlapping, but.
Right.
Okay. I'm good with questions, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah. One thing that I think we could get at this really, so even if a conflict is resolved right before, I do think it would be helpful. I don't know to what extent this allows or prevents or requires disallow, re-mentioning it every time the issue is brought up. I'm seeing about situations where, you know, my topic, public opposite and that discussion of that topic. And only those who were there, the people for that are aware of it. They find out about it halfway through and think, I haven't heard anything about this. So is there a benefit? Frozen kinds of. Frozen kinds of. Venting in any time of hours discussed. And deciding that it's been solved or how was it? And does it leave room? Is there room for the vote of the board to change over time? All right, it's not clear, they think it's different where you're going, once the decisions that they even if you don't go back. Can you imagine a situation where as the discussion of the public body goes on, people realize, oh, we maybe we would rather have you refuse yourself from this point on. But it's also lots of that talked about that. Those two things, the mentioning it every time and then is there a way for a board to change its mind at least?
So I. Painful, suspenseful, I think you have to mention it every time. And then that's your way. That's your way of making sure that's covered to me, but it's answer that. Particularly about the whole changing of migrant. Or. There's a type of laws, the worst change is something different across, I suppose, it could be a different interpretation out of that. Well, we're best way to keep it front, sorry, best way to keep the front of it. Exactly, it's acting, I think he needs to state that every meeting, that's why, otherwise, you know, why are we putting it on the agenda?
My apologies, I thought there was a pregnant pause on there. Well, and for example, if we were debating a piece of art that a community group may be submitting, it may be they're not involved, then all of a sudden they're they're in the picture in newspaper, standing next to the art that's going to be, and then maybe that's where. We might reconsider, trains are a little late today.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Risky business.
Well, this together, I'm very happy because I forgot. It's that way too. It's been a long time, I'll take that stuff. Yeah, the special on this one.
I just say one thing about saying it every time. I don't necessarily think it needs to be in this ordinance because we're talking about putting it, you know, putting it on the agenda anyway, as part of our council votes discussion, so I think we need a vote process.
Agreed, that's what I was trying to say.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I believe you can say it today and say, but if the rest of that's on the agenda. Ms. Jones. You can all vote to consider setting a public hearing for October 25th. Huber.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Griffin. Michelle.
Yep.
Aron.
Yeah.
Theo.
Yes. Motion carries, I'm in here, thank you everyone. We're down to new business. And new business item. Number one is a consideration of the care to cure recommendations from the plan.
Um, based on the information, the information provided by the office staff, we give you a widget and DAFD. And if you didn't finish this meeting, we'll send that to the team also to crew, A P C dot twenty twenty, that's what I'm saying, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, on the road. Preliminary final site plan, your visiting, our meeting, twenty twenty one. And of course, with the required articles on water, city, deck, for the fourth hand, every time it follows a petition. Recording of a quick lane deed, a big impact of Dexter and Road, ready way up twenty three. And reporting the facilities, my credit here is replacement of the Austrian five, so that keep time with Black Hills, Bruce and White's, for the staff review, dated June twenty second, seventeen one, always after. Twenty twenty one and DAFD, dated June seventeen twenty twenty one.
Okay, so that's motion, time to move to seven o'clock. Okay, that's the suggested motion on top of page ninety seven, right? Hi, questions? Well, my name.
Sure. So this item is a combined preliminary and final site plan proposed by the applicants, any route of management LLC and represented by A R Brower, who are joining us via Zoom. Um, for a 5,769 square foot two tenant office building for a property located at seventy three ninety Dexter and Arbor Road. The space will include two tenant spaces, one of which will be occupied by the applicant's business care to cure physical therapy. Um, and the site is located in the PB zoning district and also in the Dexter and Arbor Road corridor overlay district. So the plan has been updated several times according to feedback and recommendations by the planning commission staff and the city's consultants. And at their August regular meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. According to section twenty one point oh six E of the zoning ordinance, when council receives a recommendation from the planning commission, council can either approve the proposed site plan, deny it, or approve the plan with conditions. The planning commission also voted in support of waivers requested by the applicant, which are listed on page ninety six of your packet. The first requested waiver is from the requirement to provide one loading space, given the square footage of the building. The applicant has stated that they only anticipate a package deliveries and that there's not need for a truck loading space. They otherwise provide all the required parking, the twenty four onsite spaces, including two barrier free spaces and two bicycle parking groups. The waivers two, three and four in that list are request for twenty three credits for existing trees. And a approval for nine tree credits, to use nine tree credits in lieu of forty five required shrubs along the southern property line. And six credits in lieu of thirty shrubs along the eastern property line. It also includes approval for some species that are not listed in the city's landscape requirements. So following the preliminary site plan review, the applicants have gone through great lengths to maintain an existing verb on the site and the existing, the existing grade of the site slopes roughly north to west. Uh, and given the topology along those property lines, I, as the planning commission and staff's recommendations that the the swap for trees instead of shrubs would be appropriate, given that shrubs wouldn't necessarily, or excuse me, that it would be appropriate, given the existing. And it's the, the next waiver is from the requirement to provide streetlights along the property frontage. Streetlights don't currently continue east of Kensington and don't resume again, or at least Meadowview. And so it seemed appropriate to waive the requirement to provide streetlights in this case. And additionally, because the engineering standard requirement that new developments within the DDA provide streetlights has been waived by council since twenty thirteen. And that waivers or that that is still in effect. There are several waivers of for that would allow the driveway alignment is proposed, which after review by O H M, they recommend how to optimize ingress and egress safety. And then lastly, in their August review, the planning commission determined that the proposed building architecture and design is compliant with the A R C design guidelines. And there are three easement and the right of way dedication related documents in the packet, one of which is for a storm. The site will, the storm system will discharge into the current condos, the storm system. And then the, there's a quick lane deed and an easement agreement for the sidewalk access. So that's, uh, concludes my report, the applicants and are on Zoom and if you have to take any questions unless we'd like to turn it over to them.
I agree with the, the church comes before us.
They submitted a preliminary site plan for review in May, I believe. They subsequently, they got enough feedback after that initial review to apply for combined site plan approval.
When they did three. Is your margin?
Roughly.
Yeah, didn't we get into some kind of, not a disagreement, but confusion regarding providing the lighting or leaving the lighting on Baker Road?
Um. For this. No, well, you're asking about the lighting, the lighting didn't come up, but. Because.
Okay.
It's not.
I, I, this is just something in the back of my head, but thank you, that, there's enough, thanks.
Well, wait, see if anyone else has. All right. So I didn't have time to check this on, on the. Zoning ordinance, do we allow E I F S as a finishing material?
There's a, to a limited extent, and what they're proposing is below the threshold.
Just the sign?
Sorry.
Just the sign?
Oh, that the sign, it would be, um, there's a percentage of all of the side materials.
Okay.
It can be, a limited percentage can be E I F S and that the percent of that is in the A R C standards, and that's a double check, but I do know that what they're proposing. It's a twenty five percent.
E I F S.
There is. Did you agree and comment?
That's what, that's what it does.
And so one of the things that we will be discussing with the subcommittee. They just.
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know, E I F S is fake stucco. It's insulation with stuff that puts on it, you, you look at it cross eyed and it kind of dents and dings and then water gets in it. Okay. I recall in the past, we had crazy ride, right of way widths along all of our big streets. Thirty three feet sounds like less than that, have we corrected that or we're just asking for?
This.
The, so the. The, we, we would have to review to see what right of way has been dedicated for all the parcels between Kensington and Meadowview. It, the, the width of the right of way does change in that stretch and. Most of the, even, even with that variation, most of the properties have been built out sort of, for lack of a better word, assuming is sixty six foot right of way. And so there may need to be some cleanup in the master plan and some other places specifying to, to make that clear. But sixty six feet with the thirty three foot width from the center line seems to be most appropriate, given what's been built of adjacent properties.
The, a quick kind of discretionary question here, and this would probably be best for the applicants, but so as I'm looking at, one of the goals of this district is for the front entrance to be facing the street. To say here, this is kind of rotated, there is an entrance there, but my question would be if they would be. Okay, making that sidewalk a bit wider, I believe it's five feet now, like something six to seven feet. Again, just to add more prominence, I'll throw it out there. And this question is for anybody, is there? I couldn't see on here because it's really small print and my eyes are kind of awful now. Was there color temperature described with the lighting that's proposed? Or is it just the intensity?
Have to look at, see if temperatures included, but I believe are probably a warm review for intensity.
Okay, then I would throw out there for discussion that we add another condition that the color temperature be limited to three thousand Kelvins. That's where it's, it's still kind of the, the orangish color before it starts to turn the ridiculous white. And I say that because there are lots of houses right, well condos right behind it and the bright white colors can kind of be obnoxious when it's that close to you. I'm good with questions, thank you. Three thousand Kelvins, you, you can look up the fun chart and maybe show.
That's for the lighting in the interior, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think I, I think I've seen some complaints about this, you're like, I don't know what that is.
It's about. Five, four to five.
So what could, what?
Four thousand.
Yeah.
There, there, there were some complaints, I'm sure. Section was resolved. And we've since gone in and resolved directional reflectors, I think on, on those street lights, but we're not going to.
So there's.
Yeah, did you say that we, we were, we gave a waiver for, for certain tree, trees because they weren't on our list, but we waived that because of their, and I didn't get what it was because of their size?
The, the, so the, the landscape standards includes lists of varieties of, just termed acceptable trees, shrubs and.
Yes.
And. There are also prohibited species, but. From time to time, applicants can propose species review that aren't on that list, and staff and consultants didn't see any issues with what they were proposing. There were two where we recommended something a little more disease resistant, but they're otherwise acceptable, at least as far as staff's review.
So I guess I'm, I'm not sure what section twenty eight says about.
I, I don't believe we have anything in there.
There's, there's no language regarding. Nothing specific.
So I guess my, my thought is. I'm trying to get to that, because that's what should be in the future of zoning ordinance, not to be. And I don't, I don't know those.
It's.
I don't know how to introduce that now. I think, I mean, if they're, I'm just reading the. Uh, working, so the photometric bench was light up, compliance with our section. Does it go into detail on whether that's, that's the temperature?
It's, it's the intensity because all we have. It's, it's the intensity because all we have is foot candles, it's. And, and the reason I bring it up is it's becoming more and more common as LEDs are proliferating. You know, you used to have to get a very powerful halogen to get bright white light that was prohibitively expensive compared to mercury or some other thing. And especially with the, the condos back there, having a bright light, bright white light can be impactful. So I think that condition is related to managing the negative impacts and perfectly within our, our.
Yeah, I, I think I did send them a request to unmute.
Alright, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, um, sorry.
That's okay.
There we go. Good evening, um, thank you for, I guess, taking a look at our Care to Cure site plan. We've gone through the process with the planning commission over the last couple of months and feel like we've worked hard to. Meet the needs and the requests that they have given us and we respectfully request your approval this evening for our combined site plan. New and Rodica are excited to expand their business in Dexter. If there's any questions, I can answer those.
Allison, did you hear, um, there's been a, a condition to limit the, how would you say, the temperature?
Color.
The color temperature to three thousand Kelvins?
Um, I, I don't think that should be a problem, um, I, I would need to confirm with our clients, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that, that would be fine.
So, so if we approve of that condition. You're okay with us going forward with that, and if it's not, you'll come back to us, is that, you're okay with that process?
I think so. I can try to get ahold of them.
Sidewalk to the front door.
At least Zach, Zach asked if, since one of the goals is to try to have buildings facing the road more prominently. Realizing you can't vary the building, could you have the sidewalk that comes to the building from the public sidewalk? Be wider like seven or eight feet rather than five, as proposed. Just to show a little more prominence as from the front.
Yeah, I think seven feet would be, would be appropriate, eight might get a little wide.
So, okay with these?
Yeah.
Okay, well, those, those will be the two additional conditions, Allison, that are proposed in addition to the motion.
Okay.
Written by Ms. Griffin on page ninety-six or seven.
Okay, that should be fine. Yeah, and, um, the clients have confirmed that the light, lighting is okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, they have a motion. Okay, so the motion on top of page ninety-seven. It has seven conditions and we just added eight to nine, yes, eight being three thousand Kelvins and nine being from block seven to five. Is there any further discussion on the care to cure? Ms. Jones, if you could just follow the motion to approve. Just the motions with the nine conditions.
Peasants?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin? Fisher?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. This is L two, is consideration of the four street alleviation by Mr. My friend.
We'll bring you.
We both first. Yeah, we did motion.
I'd like to make the motion, which is I think on page one thirty-six, and it's, the options are to adopt, if not adopt, I would put in there adopts.
Okay, motion by thousands, second by Griffin. Questions by council, we saw this a few months ago, and they basically said, yeah, go back and get everything stamped inside and through, and go back to. All that has been done?
Uh, all of that has been done with the question of the neighboring property, not putting it in writing. It's not a requirement by law that they do that, it was more of a. Courtesy and just like an extra layer of making sure. They both verbally said they have no problems, but we could not give them. And then even held up, we're getting a shared access easement, so he's still willing to grant that if they so choose to come back to that.
And this is for my own. Does, does the motion need to, really to accept the utility?
It is in the, it's in the whereas, says for your resolution. Whereas the petitioner has granted the city of Dexter an underground public utilities easement. And it also, also states about willing to grant the easement for shared access. Correct.
Or you, would you be more comfortable, petitioner has granted the city of Dexter and the city of Dexter have accepted? Although we're not technically accepting it now.
Okay, Michelle's?
Yes.
Rab?
Yeah.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Peasants?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Over the areas?
Thank you.
This is side of L three, bottom page thirty-seven, the consideration of the question with Dexter Senior Center. For funding and about not until season two thousand five hundred, considering the rent and sales to the Dexter seniors.
I'll make it.
Supportion by Fisher, second by Peasants. Special comments.
The senior center has just really kicked out the jams in the last nine months, so it's been really hard to keep up because I have not been. Here or there at the right time, but they have done planning, futureing and, and I think if you drop by, you'd see that there's a tremendous increase. In dedication to programming for seniors attendance. I just want to say good things about them a lot, to make sure that you realize how important they are to this community.
Mr. Carson could confirm on this, but it's my understanding that this request is consistent with requests from other communities. And it's also my understanding that Scioto Township is actually going to be contributing here shortly, which is good since they've been contributing bodies.
Would you like me to reply to that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
And I'm sorry, I could. Thank you, thank you, council, thank you for the consideration of this funding. To answer Zach's question, yes, we've, we are receiving funding from both Dexter Township and Webster Township. And also Scioto Township this year. In fact, I was just communicating with Will Hathaway this afternoon. They have not taken it to their council yet, to their board, but we, they will be doing that shortly. So we have all the municipality, this is the first year that we will have one hundred percent municipality contribute, contributions.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Peasants?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin? Fisher?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, thank you, motion carries. And we decided L four, consideration of the one fifty Jeffords of sustain parking spaces.
So as.
This is one space, right?
This is one space and the DDA. Considered the request, you've seen it in my report, the, um, there is a resident or two at one fifty Jeffords. There is a barrier free in the underground parking, there are also others on the sides of the building, but in the back. And they're requesting one be more accessible in the front. The DDA did look at this, excuse me, based on the OHM estimate. And is recommending that council utilize the parking fund and go with the. The flare barrier, flare grant barrier free parking in front of the entrance, based on the OHM estimate of eighty-two hundred dollars. Being that, if we start at Main Street, barrier free parking is usually close to or within close proximity to the front door of an establishment. On Main Street, you have front doors of establishments all the way along Main Street, so you're not going to have barrier free parking the entire, the entire length, but. Strategically located in proximity to ramps that are barrier free accessible is, is where you're going to put them. If you're designing a new streetscape and, and looking to put those in, you're going to design them based on your. Based on the block and what are the most utilized buildings in that block? I don't. I don't know that there's any specific formula in Zach being a planner, or Michael, if you've got any other information on this. But for one fifty Jeffords with the existing spaces and ramps that are there, with the addition of the one space. Both the developer and the planning commission comfortable that there was sufficient access that could be. Could be provided, the big unknown is how many people in the building, like one fifty Jeffords, are going to need additional barrier free access and that's.
But there is commercial on the first floor, so there's.
There will be, um, there isn't quite yet, but there will be.
So I'm looking at the section on the bottom of page one to pick out. In the area, earlier this afternoon, trying to sort of out where is each spot. So on the left side of the picture, across the, you know, the far Petticoat Street, I see a shaded, so, uh, directing on like those two triangles. Is that another spot right there facing the ground, I mean, I saw, I saw accessible spots, yeah.
Yes.
So it's not noted on the picture, but it's sort of off the. So there is a spot that's facing the ground.
Correct, so what that, those two barrier free symbols you're seeing there?
Yeah.
That's actually facing the thirty forty-five Rock Street property, yes, there's two there, I did not highlight those, I stayed with the stuff that was adjacent.
Right. And then there's the visiting ones just opposite that, are those fronting the dance of that?
Correct.
So do you need to decide on which option?
No, the option is for in front of Jeffords.
So, so this picture of the.
Yeah, that's why I asked. Voting on the one that's on the west side. Top of the page.
It's the one on the top, up here. And this shows it a little bit better. The little inset picture in the, on the site plan sheet.
I think the one over here on the left side would be actually just spaced away from their entrance. Yeah, if you get that. That practice is kind of finding a door.
Yeah.
I know there's striking to stay away from that area, but.
I think it's a white stripe.
Yeah, I don't think it's a barrier free.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be that ramp here. It's like a well.
Yeah, I think the only ones I noticed were the one facing thirty forty-five and then the one that around, you know, those are the ones I thought of, but yeah, it's not a lot of accessible parking here. But I'm just curious how we determine.
It's easy when it's an off-site parking lot or off-street parking lot.
Right.
Because you've got excellent, there's a standard by which to do it. And I'm presuming, although I've not done it in application, that you could do that same thing with a public parking lot, even though we've got a number of public areas.
So I like improving accessibility, but there's been something I've been struggling with this on. So all the folks who, who bought a condo in there knew that it came with a single parking space in the ground floor, correct? And when the developers built this. They built it with less parking than would have been required if it were a similar building outside of the CBD.
They built it with parking underground in the, in, when they didn't have to.
But if it were outside of the CBD?
Correct.
It would be two spaces per apartment.
I would, uh, it could be two, when I can't remember if it's two or one and a half, yeah.
More, more than one.
Correct.
So.
But they also did make a eighty-five thousand dollar contribution to the parking fund.
Yeah. What I hear from this is we have another car that we don't want to park underneath here or we can't. And we want the city to build a parking space just for us. Which is fine for now, but if, if they ever figure the structure out right. I can see very much like, I'm not sure if anyone remember, but we had for years a car that was parked in front of the building twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
The minivan in the car, twenty-four seven, and that hurts business turnover, and I can see that being the same thing here, where whoever's using that. Parts of day in and day out and folks who may want to get into the businesses that they're camp.
We can. We can put. Limits on a parking space within a timeframe. But allow for overnight parking, not to, not to prohibit somebody from doing that, if they so desire. I think there are ways that we could look at. Making sure that it doesn't become somebody's dedicated parking space at the expense of any retail that or commercial that would go in.
The other thing I've been struggling with, as I understand this design, is cheaper, I'm also looking at how far it goes back into the sidewalk. Making it an unlevel sidewalk for folks who are walking up and down, which prohibits outdoor display of items. I know they've got the deed restriction that says you can't have a restaurant, so you're not going to have outdoor seating on the sidewalk. But that's something that I've struggled to, and it just because it's going on with the sidewalk, it's going sideways and. I don't know. I don't know.
Instead of the flare ramp, would you prefer to see the depressed ramp? That would be a slightly larger sum of money, but you have that even the entire flag is even. Not an engineer, so you don't have the terminology.
Yeah. Personally, I would, uh, because you, you build a sidewalk, it's going to be there for a very long time. And I want the sidewalks to be as usable for as many people. That's just me. I want to say.
A depressed ramp at that same location would be thirteen thousand three hundred dollars, but it would make it easier to navigate for people using the sidewalk. Or I should say it would mitigate the concern that. Zach brought.
Zach, the other, the other thing that could be done. It's amazing, which is the fourth one on the top of that little page. It couldn't be moved down to where you said, off the ladder. I know that's further. It's really a little policy space. This could be, um, people.
Correct.
As the security. So it could be, but it's further upwards, a little wider. I guess that's the way from the door. Then they have a little world behind it if you build a stair.
Yeah.
I don't know how material that's it is to go, you know, space so much wider.
Building so tall that the aerial is blocking the sidewalk. Would have thought we'd have that problem here, huh? It's better than a leak.
I mean, I want to share some of the concerns that you expressed about how specific it is to, you know, one residence or whether it's a resident or other people living downtown. I don't know how parking works for people who live above, you know, should have gone to Main Street, right? I don't know how, where those people park, want to be, are they able to sit in the parking spot and park their groceries? Or the bakery? I don't, do they designate parking the people who live above?
They're usually in the back.
And they have designated parking back there.
I'm sorry.
They have designated parking.
No.
They don't.
There's no designated parking, but that's where, that's usually where residential people who live downtown.
That's probably closer to their entrance or is it closer to their entrance?
For some it might be, for others it might not be. But I don't know of any city, and I took to do some checking, but I don't know of any city that loves overnight on-street parking for residential in the front.
Yeah, what are our rules on these streets?
We don't have them.
We don't have any rules over street park overnight, I think.
You could. Sean, done here.
Oh, yes, I'm just kind of thinking. Because we are, we enforce on complaint-based enforcement. It's hard sometimes to get those things attended to. Steph is busy and it's one individual's complaining. What can we do about that? What do other communities do? Do you know?
If when's, when.
It turns out twenty-four hour parking on Main Street.
So.
Or if, if somebody has rental property above and there is no dedicated space, that encourages people, I think, to.
So in some communities, they limit parking between certain hours so that you don't have twenty-four hour parking on the street. I think limiting parking overnight on Main Street, if it's been a problem, it's something to consider.
Yeah, they, I'm just thinking along with you. They can't do it during snowfall season, so that would keep them from doing it then. I just, just thinking about this down there.
And currently COVID has obviously changed a lot.
Yes.
And we, to the best of my knowledge, haven't experienced the any overnight parking consistently by any one or two individuals. Most everyone's parking in the back if they are.
I remember many times going down and putting bank boxes in. Early in the morning, there was a lot of people in those apartments that parked at the bank parking lot. But they all, it's all kind of disappeared when they went to work, so it wasn't an issue. I don't know if they had permission to do that. They're saying they have a count here. They just park there. It's okay. It didn't bother them. But it wasn't public parking, but it was private parking. They parked there and that's your judgment.
That's a decent in front.
In back, back there where you, where you go through.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
To the bank that do use that lot after hours residents, but then the other, they're cleared out by.
Yeah.
So this is not proposed to have a van accessible stripe?
This is not proposed to have van accessible. It was requested to just be barrier free. We can follow up with the gentleman to make sure what the size is, but I'm sorry, my apologies. Patrick does have this down as a, as a van accessible space. And then the other one is accessible.
Cause a van will open up onto the.
Right. So van accessible on one side, vehicle on the other.
I was trying to make sense of the picture, but it looks like it's.
What? So the, so though, if you're looking at the photographs, the photographs are only to show what the, the ramp either depressed or flared. It's not to be. Recopy of where it'll be in its exact location. They're going to have to do some scale plans for that.
So it's really taking up a lot of space then.
Take it three.
That's what I'm trying to do. That's the case, I definitely, yeah. Well, that's why, that's why I was trying to ask. I mean, location one, I think is describing this space above the blue hatch, the space that's compliant and one below that. I say that to pick up all of that space.
What is it?
More than just a street. Right.
Would you prefer to have the scale drawn before making a decision?
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, is the existing one. The existing one looks like it's taking up two spaces. Is that because perpendicular as opposed to annual?
I'm sorry, I left.
On the page that Jamie was asking a question on one sixty-five. Where any shaded areas where it read, it says existing. On the bank side of the property, the north side. It looks like there's a space and then a hatched out there.
Correct.
Which is usually where you could get out of the car on a level and then the flare ramp would be in front of that.
Correct.
Right? Is that what's going on on the north?
If it's a flare ramp, that's what be, well, that is what would be proposed on the north.
I'm not really trying to play do it. It's unclear, right? The space, I just, I just don't know how to understand the configuration. Where's the symbol that would be, is it going to be where it says be an accessible space?
I do, I can draw it.
Yeah, we can connect the next meeting with a more detailed record that show exactly where. So it's not a post position, but I'm sure I know.
Okay. We can do that.
Yeah, if you're going to come back looking at some more details. Can we also make sure that we have like actual dimensions on which version of that's, you know, how far of the sidewalk?
We'll bring back a dimension scale drawing so that it's clear as to where it would be, how many spaces it would take up, what the distance. What the distance would be between the building, where the ramp is, whether it's a flare as well as whether it's a depressed. And that will give you that visual that I figured. Thank you.
Oh. Did we just, uh, when this this question was made, it was made by the citizen that lives in the department. Is that correct?
It looks in.
Was there any discussion of whose payment?
It went originally to the DDA as the DDA is responsible for the streetscape. And as an option, um, I threw out to them that you do have a park, the city has a parking fund. And they made the recommendation to city council to use the funds and parking fund to make the improvement.
Okay.
In that general area, so the two spots that I just. Yes, I'm looking at this type of like, so I'm trying to enter that. I see the white stripe, so I don't think those are marked.
It may be that we made a mistake. I want to make sure that.
So then a conscious street where we do have the handicap is that whole thirty forty-five cross, there are two spots and they open to share. That struck me as odd, I guess, because I didn't know which were those spaces where they were supposed to help somebody get to. Yeah, is there a continued, it's too perfect sometimes. Can you get on that sidewalk? Can you actually get?
To the trail?
Around into the.
No.
You need to look at. Need to look at the aerial from two thousand. It'll make sense.
I look at the aerial here. I don't know what to do. Anyway, I guess if you're like, if we're going to spend money on something, I don't want to spend money on which those spaces more useful, because I think right now maybe.
So that's, that's true, but as part of the whole thirty forty-five Broad Street, I think the the thought is that that connection would get made as part of.
Usability of those spaces and playing for that, but I also feel like is there some value added to the community to me that would actually connect to something that people are trying to get to right now? And I don't want that. Talking about parking.
Are, are you thinking changing the strip of, of those spaces or redoing the connection?
Well, maybe. Maybe you know that sidewalk, right?
I'm just talking about extending the sidewalk to the back.
The sidewalk doesn't connect, so I don't know where somebody were parking there for the handicap accessibility, where are they going besides the future Broad Street for all of it? Or another incentive enough.
Right. I, I wish I had an answer for you. That has been that way since I got here.
Well, I don't know what time there was a building there.
Correct.
Streetscape, when the streetscape there was developed, when the buildings there for the city, that building at that time, DDA, while that building buildings turned out, they were about the street, streetside, you know, same as it is. I think the answer to your question is that some, some people that are there will get out, get on the bike. And ride the bike over the path.
Or do you can?
Way up the on-street.
Right.
Like any other space there, like any other.
Probably awkward for anybody.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you, I think your point is that this sidewalk going up to the top of it could go straight up to the asphalt path that's there, right?
Right.
That's, that's what you're saying.
Right, right. And so I'm just thinking like, there, there is like a dark, maybe there's accessible parking in that area. And when you go across the street, you see two spots right there and you think, well, where are they taking people? Or how, how is everyone going to get somewhere safely? And I guess I think they would need to have that, I guess they could go back down the sidewalk. You know, sort of.
Yeah, they have to go back to Broad.
Go back and then go up and then I don't know how well connected that is, but you could definitely, somebody's going to tap and like, how far around are they going to have to go?
Yeah, maybe the Broad Street, the pedestrian alleys like one way.
Yeah.
Is pretty well connected.
Yeah.
But.
Right, yeah. For.
Maybe you can get a, get a, we'll just see what it would cost to fix this. I think, and that's where the stairs are.
Right. Yeah, even for the public parking there. I mean, actually, I'm like kids. I personally am always trying to look at how many times you have to cross the street. So if we park in the public parking, then if we cross over, we get a ready, go inside, we go around them, and then the parking is down, it's always. You know, say you're trying to make that.
Okay, so let's ask a detailless little more for us. We need a motion to postpone, please.
We'll postpone to get further. Go to the next meeting. How about if we just say next month? Cause your next meeting is two weeks and I'm not sure that would be. Next month, yes.
Motion by the legislature?
Yeah, so we have more information.
Sent by Cousins to postpone until October?
Pretty good. No.
Okay, that's fine. Too late?
No, the end of October, you said. Thank you.
And you, this is, it's probably going to spread. Any discussion on the vote? Ms. Jones, please call vote to postpone.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Arab.
Yes.
Peasants.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yeah.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonder if they had problems with horses and wagons and puppies.
It may have.
Yeah, well, I thought it did. That's part of the issue here. Now you have to figure it all out how it fits in a new shoe.
Right. Okay, we're down to L five, which is consideration of setting a public hearing, consider the adoption of the adopted margins for general purposes.
I'll make that motion for October twenty-fifth.
Fisher? So I know it's a word that is funny. But every three years, we're basically supposed to reaffirm the court ordinances. And in order to do that, it would have to adopt ordinance, adopting the ordinance. So, um, we did this a few years ago and because that was the first time since City Hall, we made some pretty we made some significant changes just for like, you know, president, mayor or something. This one, we're not proposing much. If anything, but one thing that I would like to look at in the future is if you want to have the design ordinance rewrite, we take a look back at our. So I mean, three years from now. So the discussion on setting the border. Ms. Jones, please call vote to approve side of the border.
Yes. Griffin. Michelle's.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Arab.
Yes.
Peasants.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes. Motion hearing, thank you. We will decide fall six is discussion of the winter twenty twenty-one, side two, social districts.
Okay, so this is a, this is a discussion one, not necessarily an actual one, correct? Okay, so when you all established the social district last year, it was established, excuse me, pretty much in the middle of COVID and, and it was, it was identified to be or established to be seasonal because you were allowing on-street parking on Main Street to be converted for the outdoor service areas. And at that time, you also knew that you were, you were welcome to the idea or open to the idea of continuing it in twenty twenty-one. And so it was, the social district was established in or as a seasonal benefit to help the businesses. It was a learning experience all around. It was a learning experience all around, I think it was an exercise experience for Sean because he shoveled the snow on Sundays because it seemed to snow. Yeah, so, um. The. The intent was good and we learned a lot, if we're going to do it again, there would have to be an expenditure from city and or DDA or DDA by itself. To, for some seasonal help, one to open the tent, turn the lights on and off, turn the heater on and off. Excuse me, somebody to shovel or use a snow blower to, to clear the earth when it snows. The businesses had the best of intentions to try and help with that last year, but even starting last June, finding help was difficult, it's not any better now. And so relying on them or expecting them, whichever word you want to use, to do it is, is probably not. A good idea. If, if we don't want to go to the expense of the staff. And the help and closing off the, the parking spaces for what, what really only ended up benefiting, if you talk to the businesses, it really benefited the beer run a great deal. Aubrey's not so much. Dexter Pub did, did not get their stuff in to the, to the liquor control to be able to take advantage of it, so. It didn't help them at all, Arrenacales did get a few people who came in and got their beverages and walked downtown. But I don't know that anybody other than the Beer Grotto would really come in here and tell you, yeah, we gotta have it because it was great for us. The Beer Grotto would have the option of coming in and requesting the use of the parking spaces. Excuse me, a few of them right next to their, to the side of their building, if that was desired. And that doesn't have to be part of the social district, that's, would be just part of their outdoor service area. The Fillmore does want to participate because the Fillmore plans to stay open this year. And so what I showed you in your packet was you have the resolution that was adopted before, the management and maintenance plan and the previous boundary map. You could basically keep the same boundary map you had before. But extend it down the main street sidewalk on the south side to Baker Road, then across the street on the sidewalk connecting to the Fillmore. That way, your social district in your common area can have your businesses, which is what. Liquor control requires in order for people to be able to be part of a, a social district. But it also limits where people are going to consume, they're not consuming in a car, it's on public streets, which are easily. Observed and enforced by Sheriff's Department, who by the way, had no difficulties last year with our social district, so. If I had to make a recommendation to you, it would be, if you're going to do this, go with the lighter, less expensive route. Expand your social district and common areas boundaries to, to incorporate the ability for the Fillmore to participate. Don't set up the social district tent, because you can't do it in a way that meets the liquor control commission's requirements and benefits everybody. So let's try, let's try just the expanded district on the good days, see people come out, take advantage of the ability to see all the different businesses. At their own sort of rock hall, if you will, and, and see how that works.
So without intent, I'm sorry, so without intent, we would sell designated consumption area?
The, all of the sidewalks within the, so. All of, because our social district and common area were the same boundaries, everywhere was a consumption area. We designated to kind of control where people would go. As we all know, it had varying levels of success, so.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say, I, I don't see a reason to do it. I don't think I was born in the neighborhood last time. With respect to the outdoor service area, I know we have a park list right now that are on Main Street, in the October twentieth and November twentieth.
November thirtieth. Yes.
You had mentioned that the Beer Grotto could use faces facing the direction of parking lot.
Correct, they could use, they could request an amendment to their outdoor service area to use a set number of parking spaces. Whether it was, they put up a tent or they have those little greenhouses that they had last year to expand their outdoor service area.
But all outdoor service areas expire for half a year?
No.
No.
Just around the Main Street.
Okay.
Because of needing that area to be cleared for some.
Right, so if a dinner business had parking spots that were not on Main Street, it could lose parking spots.
Correct, for example, behind Dexter's Pub, that area is private, they bring it, they will amend their permit and request to put a tent up.
I, yeah, I mean, I think just given that certain of the conditions that were in the previous resolution, for example, no indoor restrictions. And place, to me, it seemed like it wasn't something to help with. COVID thing happening, and I guess they don't, I wasn't supportive of it then, and I don't see that there are such different conditions, I guess. I know it's a discussion I don't make, I'll just say it this way.
This is.
Yeah, I, I took the intent, but when I came driving through today, that we got banners, so it was gonna look better. And they're all sagging and hanging, they look terrible, and then we wanted, Beer Grotto wanted to make it look a little better, well, that may be a little better to you, but to me, it was like, what? It's just a bunch of flats or.
Their.
Yeah, if you're gonna do something, and so I'd rather, if we're gonna do that, I'd rather see DDA do something to spruce it up and make it look good. I'm kind of leaning towards what you're saying, Jamie, is that that was some COVID method, and those businesses have succeeded, they've gotten through the worst of it. I'm inclined to say that, I don't know that it's worth it to do it.
If you, if you expand.
I like.
You're not putting any additional monies, you don't have to buy barriers, the only thing you're doing is putting up that temporary signage. And just making sure that it's maintained and that your district stays clean, which we can do that with existing stuff.
As you recall, I had a concern about this the last round, so I haven't really changed my mind a whole lot, seeing, I mean, I think we, it served the purpose to give them a boost in terms of. Patronage, but. However, I'm not gonna fuss if everybody else likes it.
So, how much does a signage cost for us to put up, would you estimate?
Pennies on the dollar, we do it in halves, we laminate it, DPW straps it to the temporary base balls and.
Okay.
They put it up. Lighter, quicker, cheap. But still looks good and does the job.
We got room for a sign shop up there too, so. That's all.
Okay.
So Michelle, we did this for one year last year.
We did it for a season.
One season.
Right. With the, with the intent of coming back and discussing it, determining what you would, whether you'd do it again.
So we have to update the management.
Right, those are my changes, yep, we'd take it back to LLC. You do a new resolution. So that it was updated.
And would your recommendation be that if we did that, would it start at December one?
It would start December one, correct, when the, when the other one ended. Then on Street, Main Street. It would go till, I believe it's April thirtieth. But I would double check that date, just to be sure.
Be consistent with our new, our.
Yes.
City area limits.
Correct.
And then. For example, the pub doesn't need this, if they want to protect it, because that's part of, they are doing a type of taxi.
They can do it on private property, right, they do have to apply to amend their current.
Right.
But other than that, yeah, it falls under the current arrangements.
And you're saying that the Grotto would do the same type of thing, their current arrangements, they could apply to use.
Correct.
Parking spaces, they're not.
Right.
Streets per se.
Correct, they would, they would, the question will be. Does the city and DDA continue to pay for barriers or would the Grotto pay for their own barricades? Because barricades would be needed.
Right, and Fillmore, but Fillmore could. Use their parking.
They can use their.
The deck.
Or they're expanding their role, yep. But they could, in theory, use their parking lot, it probably wouldn't because it's got a lot of sloping to it.
I mean, if all of those businesses were gonna do something unique on their own. The only benefit of the social district is that you could carry a beverage from one to the other.
Correct, correct, you're, you're now using the social district and let, instead of it being used as a tool to help your businesses. That being the primary, you're now using it as a tool to market your community and bring people in to experience your downtown. And there's pros and cons. To consider.
Yep.
Yeah, so can people take their drink from one side to the other, each aside the other one, or they have to?
No, 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 no.
Right.
They cannot take their drink from the Beer Grotto into Dexter's Pub and vice versa.
Right.
It could only be consumed within the common areas within the social district.
They could leave erratic ales with the beverage and plastic cup, a little sticker, a special top, and they did. Drink it on their way walking to the pub, if they were doing.
Right, they go away to the, like, stay, and I don't maybe something happened to think that, could they go to the Beer Grotto outdoor parking spaces or the parking lot of, you know, circle the consumption on the sidewalk?
The consumption could only be in that public common area, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's helpful to hear about the options for outdoor space and that these businesses already have the. Really is the only benefit that's something you might have.
Ms. Jones.
Yeah, you said you didn't think some of these other restaurants have a beer garden with benefits?
Of the, of the closed off parking area?
Have you had that discussion, what they think about this?
I have not had the discussion about, I've had the discussion with expanding it with Cooley for the Fillmore. I've not had the, the discussion with the Beer Grotto or Arrenacales or Aubrey's because I had their feedback from last year.
From what I've heard from even many restaurants here downtown, and I, they're still struggling. They're, you know, they build it, and part of it is because they can't find workers. Others is just because it's, people still aren't going out. Others do, the younger people do, some of the older people still don't. So you get somebody finding out in restaurants that they're, you know, they don't get the business they had before. But you know, it's, it's a tough thing if you're, if you're in a business, you're trying to make that, that margin so small and. Yeah, speak from experience. Anything, you know. You know, the snowstorm can affect your bottom line if it's long enough to keep people going for a week. And they gotta get back in to think about it again, I bet, you have this date, but now we gotta find another date, our group is coming in, our friends. It's a tough business, so, you know, I guess I'm leaning that anything would make them. Have a better opportunity with this, they're an age still with COVID, the way it is, we don't know what it's gonna be, we really don't know what COVID's gonna be, we're seeing it, but we're not, we don't know. It's been yet, there's a lot of, you know, you're not letting kids go to school. That's not normal. So what is normal, restaurant business is to try to keep them surviving as much as they can. I guess I'm a real one leaning to that, to think about that, or trying to be a candidate.
Yes, I think that I expressed this the last time too, last time around, and this is some of the concerns that I have if we do this. The, we're catering to the restaurants, but there are other businesses in town, and how do I justify taking parking out of the public parking lot and giving it to the Grotto so that it works for them? But it doesn't have, didn't help the craft lady at all to block off in front of her place, I, I, I really wrestle with what is the right thing to do? To balance between those different types of businesses, I want to be fair to everyone.
Michelle, is the, is the map on page? Six, which is last year and a half. Is that slightly different? I understand it more, slightly different, another map relative to Southern Eric's. Number one. On that map, last year, there was a parking lot between Derek Queen and the Grotto, not including the spaces that are owned by.
Correct.
Derek Queen gentleman, his name is Stacey.
Mike Holzer.
Mike Holzer, but it did include the spaces alongside the Grotto.
Correct. Correct.
This map that you're drawing down below. That's, you know, posed, but it could be.
This one shows, shows the entire parking area without Mike's stonings, but it's not identified as a consumption area because it's not blocked off from a tent. But people would have to be able to walk to their vehicles.
But in essence, it's all consumption.
It's all consumption, it's just not blocked off.
Yeah, the consumption area, we were doing, we were trying to keep people with the spaces rather than.
Than walking on the sidewalk, right, and people did walk on the sidewalk, I mean, they went from different places to different places. I think one of the, I was in, in town the day of the ice fest, but you were in town the day of the ice fest.
Well, what I was gonna say is, that day. That day or that weekend, or whatever they call that. This was huge. I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that social districts. Market your talent necessarily, and we're on a list, and this, you know, last year we were one of.
Twenty six.
Twenty six, okay, but I don't know that I heard that, that people that said we visited Dexter because we had a social district.
It's, it wouldn't be the primary marketing tool, but it.
I would, I would, I, I think that a lot of people visited Dexter because they had outdoor seating in places. And they can get away from, learn a geeky because it was a smaller town.
Right.
And I, I sat outside the Grotto a lot. And when I wasn't shoveling or even after I was shoveling, I sat outside the Grotto a lot. It was, it was nice to have extra space when it's crowded.
Right.
But, but the only time it was really crowded, you know, we took some craftsman different people for it, was during the beautiful day that was the ice fest. I mean, it was a great day, it was opposite of two years ago when it was raining.
When it was horrible, yes, yes.
Nobody wanted to be outside, when it's nice, people will be outside, I don't think they necessarily need the social district to necessarily do that. But on that, but on that day. When you, when our town was having an event.
It was huge.
This is a huge draw, this is huge for the business because people will migrate with the beer that they have for the beverage, whereas they can't do that otherwise. You do get a benefit on that day, I, I think for that week.
So you bring up.
I got against, I got against doing this because I think most of the time it's very benign, most people don't. No, nobody's calling up everybody and saying, hey, let's go to the social district. I guess it's going to start happening. Well, that's, there's, so now, then.
I was pointing there.
Oh, okay, excellent.
So, yeah, I think to me that's, having a social district is different than what, do we put a tent there, do we barricade the parking areas and things like that? And what you just mentioned, Sean, the success that I have seen in social districts is that ability to, it, it's. that ability to, it, it's not by itself as a draw, but the ability when you are in town and there are events or things you can do that then you walk with your beer from one location to the other or go to the festival or see or absorb what that.
Right. The holiday hustle will be, if we, if we move it up to December one, the holiday hustle will take huge advantage of this. We missed it last year because we didn't get this placed until Christmas or whatever. And that, that's another event. There's a December event, second week of January, where they disprove. And the ice festival, I assume it's coming. There's at least two events that will benefit highly.
Yeah. So I have a question. Can, can they, based on this, I, I can't tell and I can't remember. I'm sorry. Sorry. Can they sit at the monument park with their beer?
No, that was specifically excluded.
So to me, that, the areas that, or the towns that I have seen with successful social district are the ones that have a natural place for people to sit, right? And especially if the weather is good or, and, and things like that. So I understand not wanting to, to have it in the park. Uh, but I think, um, if you are not having the tents and not having the barricades and, and things like that, then it's just really just a side marks. But generally, I think having a social district to me, it's, uh, it's, it's very helpful, especially in events.
That's the others. Well, we had three different questions, so let's get those and then I'll throw an option for you all to consider.
Was the exclusion our decision or the state's decision?
The exclusion of what?
The park.
It was our decision.
Okay.
Because there was a, when I first started drawing the districts for you, there was one that included the park. And the feedback right away was, we'd rather not have that in the park.
Okay, with not having it in the park. Either of the parks.
Right, and, and.
But between the businesses, I don't know.
So, did, was there another?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, my, my, was, uh, whether or not we move forward with this, that wouldn't necessarily clue us from, you know, for example, working through an extra chamber to do limited special events. So, you know, uh, that chamber could apply to the local control mission to use a, an area that you could put barricades or weight fencing out. Um, and have, you know, a, a, a weekend or a weekend day as, as a, as an event. Um, where people could consume within that area.
So you mean in lieu of doing the, this large. No, he stole my thunder. So, so the duty of the social district is you get to set what the boundaries are, where it includes the common areas. But even more importantly, the timeframe. You could set it up so that you have it when you have events. If you're opposed to doing it at a set period of time or for the season, that's another option for you to consider. And that way, hopefully, tho- those events happen on weekends that are really, really nice. Because then you can really take advantage of it. If they're not, you know, you, you do the best you can. We don't have crystal balls. But those, if you don't do the social district at all, then those days or those weekends when you do have really nice weather, you don't have that same advantage to take advantage of that. So it's, it's, you've got options. It's just, you know, just let me know how you wanna, what direction you wanna go. I will take this to, uh, let's see. Yeah, DDA hasn't seen this yet, so.
It, it is good that we're talking about September though.
Yes.
It's gonna be in place.
You want it in place when?
Want to start in September one.
Yep.
Whether it's just weekends or how we define it this time in person.
Absolutely.
So there's, there's, there's at least two events that our town's gonna have.
When is holiday hustle? Okay, so.
Second, second, second weekend.
Right. So you would, in theory, you would really want to make sure you get, make a decision by the end of October so that you can let the people know who are making, who are doing these different events, know in advance. So that they can, they can take advantage of marketing. Ask around it. Yeah, and I get it. Yep.
Well, and the other thing we saw last year was that the rules for restaurants changed. And the rest of it's changed. You know.
Yes, they did.
So if by us adding something alleviates the indoor restrictions, we give the businesses a.
You, yes, you've given them something that you don't.
You don't have to react so fast. Like last year, we were behind from the start.
Right.
Zach did a great job of getting us started in the right direction. We just didn't get there.
But I also think Mr. Cousins makes, makes a, a really good point. And that is people, not everybody, a majority of people actually are still not comfortable being indoors. So.
Yep, I agree.
So even though we don't have those restrictions and those.
We have this one next agenda to this, to the special insider.
Yeah.
Potential, maybe we call it a special side consideration with the next item.
Okay. I'd be all for getting it done sooner, right, than later. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you very much. So special side consideration, one, two things, there's something for me to motion. Or we can discuss, we had a workshop that ended a little bit after seven in our last meeting. And we at least got through the reading of all the different rules. Justin and I wanted to check and sure if we were ready to, to act or if we want to actually act or adopt. As modify these modified things that a lot of it's in here makes sense.
I'd like to take it as far as getting some of these dates and titles and those things that are meeting times and locations of that. I personally, I'm not ready to vote on some of these major changes because I'm not convinced why we're doing it. So. That helps anybody, but.
Well, so, so let me just, what do you think is major that's, that's shown in either revenue here?
I guess I'm not understanding it.
Well, well, I mean, I mean, some of these changes are, starting on page one, there's the mandate date. There's the.
Yes. That's what I think is important to get on with.
Okay, there's the, you know, the ready meeting, you've done the stuff, you know.
I don't think we know where we are until the vacancy.
Hold on, wait.
Go, go ahead.
Exactly. It's best concern about making sure that when something was in four or five, they got on again. We haven't forgotten that. That's noted if we ever failed that in the past. We don't want to do that forward. Right. And when I said nobody got it on two point one, we could talk about Zach, he knew that up. It was his concern. I, I still think this works very well as a general rule when people want to put something on.
Well, I'd like to respond to that. That, just because Zach gets busy and he decides, oh, I got it there by five. This group of people have been working all week long trying to put together a packet that makes sense. I don't know that I want to put pressure on staff to say, well, if you just get ready. Because if they get it to you on five, you have no leeway. You've got to do it. I don't know if that's what we want to do. I mean, maybe you don't say, yeah, that's a great idea, staff. We'll say that. I'm not, firstly, I don't want to make that decision for you. So that's my concern about that. We should plan ahead as much as they should plan ahead.
Well, I, I would say if I, I may, I'll try to be clear. If, uh, it's the five o'clock that's the issue, then we should set an earlier time. It's, it's not. So for me, it's the philosophical issue of should an elected official, one of the legislative co-equals, have someone that says that's not getting on the agenda? Does that happen? And I don't think that's right, that someone here wants to put something on in its completed form, fully boiled, no extra staff effort.
I've never experienced that, so I'm.
I have.
Okay.
And so that's why I'm, I'm a bit swarm. And that's also, if it's more time we need, then maybe we should push it back earlier. I know there's a lot of pressure to get things quick. Um, I will say, um, as a zoning administrator, in fact, your township is a bit ruthless. Here's the deadline, get things out. We're getting packets out ten days before the meetings. If you don't have it, you gotta wait for the next meeting. Uh, it's only once a month, but that's all.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and Steph can correct me if I'm wrong or if I forgot something. When I submitted things for the packet, I submitted everything that I wanted to. When I remembered on my own inside of it and on the documents that to the extent that I've been able to, I combined the PDFs. Uh, so it's given to them to say, can you just insert this where this goes with the packet? I don't think I've ever said, I'm gonna talk about this big topic, go do the research, put it all together. So that's at least my intention going forward. And so I don't know if that makes you feel better about a five o'clock deadline. It's basically someone saying, here are a couple more pages that you need to insert. I don't know when physically you'll be inserting and compiling your PDF. It takes some time, a little, once every couple together. So if council, if when they are submitting to you by Monday at five, is it, if it is a combined PDF or if it's three PDFs that you need to combine, when do, like, when do you typically compile your giant PDF?
Yeah, so, so, uh, to, to, to refer back, the, the completed with metal item is what appreciated whatever folks have sent that. Other than that, well, um, it, it, it's something, it comes with a memo and it's a completed item. That it, it's fairly minimal staff work to, to prevent. Uh, and then if I have.
When do we normally pull up everything we have?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you usually, the, the compilation is the very last thing. So, you know, it'll, it'll be two, three hours before. So that actually gets.
Here's an example. This is great stuff, but I didn't, it really didn't like I had time to really absorb what's on here. So how did this not get in the packet or am I not understanding what the intent of this is?
What is it?
It's this.
So, a few, a few minutes ago, some time ago, we, we made a comment that we wanted to try and meet as best we can.
Yeah.
Had questions.
Yep.
Submit the questions ahead of time. Ask them all that. Staff in return said, if you get us the question by by time of full weekend or by Monday morning, we'll put together an answer. And you put it on the table for everybody to see what came through the weekend. So these, these.
Well, that's another piece.
These are, these are either staff updates, as is the Millbrook Brewery this year, that was from, from Michelle. Cause there was a meeting on Friday afternoon. Didn't make the packet that came out on Wednesday or Thursday. And then some of these are questions again from the packet, right over the, over there. Now, I haven't read this either. I didn't see the email. I haven't read it here to table.
Gotcha.
I, I, I don't know what I missed in, in this exercise. I'm not always at my computer. I'm at my computer a lot. I don't always know what I've missed.
Well.
In an email prior to the meeting. So I, I, I honestly don't like this coming up on Monday.
It seems like this could come out in a package. If, if the timing could be set so that the questions get there so that this can come in the packet. As far as the staff update, I'm happy to hear from Justin. I'm happy to hear what Michelle's meant to. Mike, whatever he's working on. That's okay. I, I don't mind getting staff updates from here. Um, but to try and read staff update from here and some other stuff that I, what I tried to do is, oh, that doesn't, this continues to tonight. It's, I'd rather get this so, because I think this is good material. I think this is useful.
But, but that's, that's.
How to make it work.
Totally different than this two point one. This is stuff.
I got you. I understand. I'm just relating this to that.
And by saying, I mean, this, this, this is an attempt to, to basically raise the packet up to today.
I got you.
There's an update to that, so maybe folks wouldn't be able to ask the questions about the packet, or they have the packet.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, just if you don't have a chance to read it before the meeting.
Yeah.
You're easily gonna follow all of this later in the week or at the next.
I want to find your account.
So, and, and, you know, this, this is born out of, you know, it's nine.
I'm, I'm smiling and kidding you. E D I's coming in.
But I guess everybody, you know, this is born out of, you know, it's, it's nine P M. It's from the last, uh, new business.
Yeah, I get it. I'm just trying to figure out what makes it the most effective. And then I also am thinking about Jamie has come in, got a fresh approach and says, takes you forever to go through a meeting. Let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. And so, you know, some of these things, it seems to me like there's some value. And whoever is the committee that's sitting together, putting this agenda together, whether the mayor's involved, I don't know. Maybe Justin decides, I don't know. Maybe Michelle has it. What, maybe Marie has something to say. I don't know. But in terms of trying to make all this stuff, so we're not in here all night, because I could fight to get something on the agenda, and it's a really cool agenda, and it may not get the attention that I think it needs. It may not get the, um, the thought, the discussion that needs, because we've got an agenda that's this long. It seems to me like there is some value in staff being able to determine what goes on or how much goes on. So I guess I don't take issue with them having some control over that. That may be because I'm old and I've been here too long. Uh, however, I've seen it work for a lot of years when we didn't have any of this kind of stuff going on. And we worked pretty smoothly and we accomplished some great things. And if we didn't, we all wouldn't want to be here. So. My piece.
Uh, I would throw out the idea to make this more usable, make clear reference to the agenda item. Folks, when we get to that topic, we can more easily bounce back and forth without Sarah having to sit down and read the whole thing. And, yeah, I, I, staff definitely has a better pulse on what's going on and staff should if it's a busy agenda or they know it's gonna be a long painful agenda, say, hey, you want to wait for this thing and give that option. But I don't think staff opt to veto. I, I can't imagine the staffers in Congress telling legislators, we have a busy day today. We're gonna put this debt ceiling thing later.
Right. And, and just so we're on page eight here, do you remember what the thing was that?
Yeah, it was.
You, you did it last week.
It was fire station related.
Okay, well, that's a big, broad topic. If, if that's happened once, like I said, I apologize for that. Okay, that's not a path. It's not a path. This, this hasn't really been a problem. It may have happened once, and I'd still like to know when it was or whatever, but. This hasn't really been a problem. And, and, and I think, I think everybody's been flexible on it. But at the times I know, when you do know that it's on the agenda, but you don't have the PDF that she's saying she has at five o'clock. You said, by the time you get there at nine o'clock in the morning, you get your computer. And nobody has any problem with that. I think that the total, you know, it's all notifications, all this. So it's like a notice of its coming. It's the way I look at this.
Yeah, um, and I want to change the direction just a hair. I don't agree with you that we're legislative co-equals. You know, Sean can't make a motion. So there you go. There's a difference. Right there, there's a, and it is a difference. So philosophically, we probably all have an idea of what that is, but I don't see anything that clearly defines what you've been talking about, the legislative co-equal. And so it's hard for me to follow that, follow your advice, when you, you make that statement, but I, I don't see any reference to it. I don't, I don't understand even why it makes a difference.
Yep. It's in the structure of the charter.
Again, I'm not sure that I understand what kind of a difference it makes in dealing with this kind of thing. Unless you're concerned that, that the mayor has some political power to set an agenda and you don't like it. I think that, and I mean you personally, I mean you collectively, if the person doesn't like it, I get that. However, again, I haven't.
The, the philosophical difference that I. The, the philosophical difference that I have made. Some are on the table is I think that there's common courtesy of if it's a new item and nobody's heard of it and you're bringing it up by five o'clock. I think it should be especially. Now, I know that dog rules. To act and say. Everything should be consideration. But the courtesy to the public and, and everybody. That we've operated around this for many years. We don't have to operate this way. We determine how we operate. That's why we do this. The courtesy we've had forever was if it came up out of the blue. It was a special item for each slide. And then if it made it, if it had enough momentum to make its way into consideration. There were two times it was on the agenda before it was actually applicable.
Well.
Now, I, I always, I always appreciated that.
Yes, because you, you, you don't have something sprung on you and you have two weeks to think about. Or to get more information or to survey your neighbors.
Well, we, we've, we've tried. We've tried to take the input that we had. As this council has grown together since November. More and more things are on here as consideration, and we've also been doing a better job of operating from point A. So we're, we're proving that what Zach suggested is that everything should be considered. If you're not ready to consider, then we'll lock. And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to adopt that. That mentality to go, it's a little bit different way than. Right, and it's okay. It just takes a little bit used to, you know, for me, it's like. There are comments on the whole dog, probably. Right, bring it on a while. It's just the way we did it. The way we did it, right? But in, in the case of what's here, folks, back to this. This is proposing no changes essentially to two one. Other than striking out in or other responsible administrative officers that replaces that order that you need. I mean, I don't hold there's anything problematic in two point one. Or two point two. It's different than how we're operating. Unless somebody wants it to be different. The order of business, we've got, we're changing to instead of having. Or proposed here, instead of having under approval, the agenda, your declaration of passions and interests. We're moving that to separate it. And I'm just reading through what's here. A bunch of changes to the reports, you know, names and. Several things are stripped in there. We've got the current boards of commissions. Consent agenda, there's a set still to leave it. Whole business changed unfinished. Clarification of what postponed should be actually postponed or required to be done unfinished. Added references to student council representatives, other council comments. And most of this down to. Rule three is, is there's no change. Rule three has no changes or very little changes. And most of this is not. Very different than the way we operate today. I'm perfectly okay with it. I think it works very well.
Yeah.
But I don't, that doesn't mean I know whether you're ready to, to make a motion or not, or whether this will, if we make some motion type. Then, you know, we'll just bring this back one more time. We should adopt, we, we should adopt something. Especially as we're now meeting here and formalize certain things. I realized that rule seventeen, I believe last, that last meeting said, maybe we, maybe we'll have a separate continuation of that. That's what I remember.
Okay. Then I, then I'd like to make a motion to approve council rules. As in who's in the packet.
Vice Fisher.
I second.
Second class now. What are your questions, Zach?
Um. I can't support it right now because the, the seventeen hasn't been sorted out. Um, and it's a bit of insight. One of the challenges with COVID is we don't have a time to just chat and, and gather. So my background, for those of you who aren't familiar. I work in planning and zoning, which plays out over not months. But years and decades. So I've been trained through professional work and through school. To try to project way into the future. When you're writing code, you're also trying to see, you're trying to break it. How does this not work? How could someone take advantage of this? If I use this word instead of this word, what sort of chaos is that gonna cause? So I'm not. Necessarily saying that I have concerns with how this is working, but I'm trying to. Future proof it. I'm trying to take away bugs where it could be abused in the future. Not, not by this council, but we've, we've seen how norms. Aren't always followed these past four or five years. And so that's, that's my. Big consideration.
Well, keep in mind that if you can only bring something back. For discussion on specific rule, you should have something in place. Otherwise, hopefully have a place as well as previously adopted for years.
Yeah, I know we talked a little bit about. We talked about rule seventeen. We talked, we did in the past. Uh, I did just got them to see that. Again, I like what's got, I think these people don't, uh, Dexter, she just had a resolution. And in September, they held a special meeting to conduct the interview. So I got this done from our previous conversations with people who are not in favor of moving to sort of like a range towards voting a month where all of council vote. I offered up, I don't know necessarily a compromise, but at least interviews and staff, where at least the interviews of the candidates are public. So that all council is conducting the interview and the public is privy to that interview. So I, I looked at their packet. So at least there was structure. I don't know that we've made particularly just in the rules or not, but I don't want to. But here they said there were five questions and each candidate has three minutes to respond. Um, and then here we list their five questions. In the packet. So. That's something that we can consider, um, rule seventeen, if you want to add something about interviews publicly. Um, and then with regard to. I did come across and I was on some things news about the, their candidates up for mayor of Chelsea and they still get their own Chelsea forum. And it was interesting that both candidates, their questions, what specifically do you believe is the role and they are Chelsea and they both emphasized. Um, being in a council manager for our government. When this gentleman responded. I think there could be a misunderstanding within our community believing that the mayor has some sort of an elevated role. The mayor does have an elevated role. The mayor is one voice. We have a certain principle, council, the mayor has one goal. And as equal to all the other local city council, Mr. Ch, uh, Chaco. Followed up on that and said, yes, we have this council manager for our government, the council mayor will be tandem. Um, the mayor facilitates meetings, but has responsibility of representing the city and certain issues, but it's not additional power per se. The council and the mayor together are responsible in the policy. I don't necessarily think I was wrong about this point, but I know it's come out. You remind me of this article that I read. And I guess I would also say regarding the agenda that staff doesn't vote to approve the agenda at each meeting. So there is something. Different about the role of council members and staff when it comes to. The agenda. I would also say that. You know, any council member can propose to have them to be done at meetings. Or, you know, all councils should vote to remove everything from the agenda.
I agree.
So, you know, there is something to learn about staffing council when it comes to the.
Very.
I guess, you know, we, we, we talk about. That changing the philosophy. And if it says a discussion item. Then we decide to. Do something with it, but most of the time when it says discussion item. That's all I expect. I expect a motion after. I don't think the public does either. They look at this, they say discussion, and then we make a motion. I think they felt that they're, they're, they're not here to. Make a comment or write a letter or do anything like that. Well. Now we're just changing the whole philosophy that said. A discussion of, oh, we made a motion. It's not the motion, it's just the emotion right now. I disagree. I, I vote no. I just, because of that, one, well, one of them. I just don't think we should be, you know, having a discussion. I put it, spread an agenda, publish it to the public and then. Turn around and make an emotion up when they haven't had an opportunity like that. Input if they. Wanted to on an item that they actually could see black and white.
I used, I used.
While they, well, while, so, so this says both. The, the agenda that we proved has both discussion and consideration. For every set, because it was.
Oh, I, yeah.
It was up in the air as to where, where we were.
Okay.
We had the whole workshop. Last meeting on this, we read through them and we actually had a couple of comments on it. And then this whole thing has been posted in this.
Yeah, I, I got it. Okay, I missed, I missed it. Sorry.
But by the way, that being said, I opened this by saying, I'm not sure where you are or where we are. You as collective, you. We. I'm not sure where we are. If we're ready to do this or not, you know, if, if we aren't ready to do this. Then we push it to that meeting, but at some point in time.
Right, I agree.
We either need to update it. Or. Can to follow the previous event, which council was supposed to do this. You know, if, if for no other reason like that, but we ought to update the very first. Sorry, part of this. So that people know where our meetings are at. You know. So now.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I understand that. We might want to have more discussion on rule seventeen. I'm going, they can't stand council. So I would, um, put an amendment that we. Approve the first sixteen rules. Tonight. And. Then have more discussion on rule seventeen.
Uh, I'll change my motion to that. That's. That works. Um, but I wanted to say, I don't think I understood Paul. Um, you wanted, you wanted us to have it be. Discussion or consideration, I vote one or the other or both.
I miss the consideration.
Oh, okay, because I'm with you. The reason that I never liked having stuff up here every meeting was. Consideration, consideration. It, it sends a message to the community. And it also. It keeps me from trying to, after we had some kind of discussion about it, there is no discussion. The motion's out there. We gotta take care of it. I'd rather have some things that. I'd like to be able to go home and think about it or survey my neighbors or whatever it takes.
But, uh, we, there are communities that only have action items. They don't discuss anything in meetings.
Okay.
They find other ways to discuss.
But don't they then have a workshop meeting first?
Well, I don't know where it happens. And sometimes they have workshops, sometimes, I don't know, and I don't know.
Because I've heard of communities that have discussion meetings and then action meetings. First one of the month.
I've always liked that we were able to discuss something.
I do too.
And go home and think about it. I'll come back.
I agree.
And I, I think that's what I'm saying. From my, from my first time.
I'm with you, Paul.
I've always thought that was okay, but I'm also saying that I get the support of some, that, that, that if people wanna have everything be consideration. And I'm. And that's what we do. That's how it works. But I, I'm personally okay with. There being things that are brought from the first time or whatever, discuss them. Think about it when somebody's ready to put it on as consideration and say, yeah, that's a job consideration.
I think it keeps.
And then, and then he could put, then he could put it on as consideration. If we don't want to consideration, an approval agenda, we can change it back to the same. Right, again, to, to a point, he's the one who printed this thing. Or the city manager, you know, not he today, but the manager.
You can always want to postpone this, right? Government were considering, I know. Or in fact, there was a potential drawback. If you have something as a consideration, I know. Everybody knows, okay, you're, you're ready to be, if you feel like you have the information, if you don't, somebody makes a motion to postpone, or whatever. People feel like they don't have enough information at this time. On the flip side, something come in the discussion and we go, oh, we could resolve that in this one meeting. Oh, now somebody asked, but we can't. We don't wanna like to the public and say that we make a motion, it's certainly a consideration, because we really, we kind of, we kind of resolved it in our first discussion. And there's sort of like this added step of, well, it has to go back. And you know, and we talk about it in that. So. I guess the drawback I see of having things be a discussion item, I suppose, is that you could resolve it in one discussion and wanna make a motion and then not be able to and have to. Delay for two weeks. Conversely, if everything's a consideration item and you don't feel ready to talk about any of it, or make a decision on any of it. We can discuss and postpone. So I don't know. That's compelling reason for things. To be one or the other.
I'll just.
I think, um, kind of, I, I agree, Jamie, that there's this. Would it be this? Would it be that? Or would it be, I think for some things that we have discussed a few times. It makes sense to then be a consideration or discussion consideration that at least we give the public the. Um, understanding that, okay, we have been talking about this for a while. We might have a chance to actually consider a motion on this at this time. But having something for the first time, I agree that. That should be a discussion. So at least we have a chance to publicly have a discussion. And for public to also know that this might take longer than just, you know, doing a quick consideration. Um, the other thing that, um, you know, I have here and there made comments about. Other communities and I don't, and I wanna make a clarification on that. I am not at all opposed to have, um. Examples from other communities. I want to have examples from other communities, but what I. See at times is that. That's our first thing that we are doing, that our discussion starts with. Oh, this community has done this, that community has done that, without actually having a discussion of what Dexter wants. What Dexter needs, what is. Our council coming together and wanting to have a conversation. What have we heard from our constituents on the street? And then, because we can go and bring examples of the entire United States from one side of it or the other side of it. But we really don't have a discussion of. What our community wants. And then based on that, if somebody, another city has a good example with. Then we can, we should consider it and we should look at things. But otherwise, we can just bring examples that one. Negates the other until the end of time. Oh, that's, I want to clarify that that's in the, in that experience that I want to have a conversation first about our own community.
Mo, ourselves are with the community.
Both, either both, you know, having a chance of having conversations with our neighbors, having, we are here because. Our community put us here, right? So, um, they're, they're. Us having a conversation also means that we are hopefully reflecting what our community and our constituents want.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fisher, second by. To. Prove council rules. As shown here on April ninety-two to two. Rules one through sixteen. Continued discussion on seven. Is that better?
Yes.
Actually, one quick statistic. So for order of business. We added declaration of public disinterest before of the agenda. I don't know if anybody is, anybody would be in danger of swapping those. I'm just wondering if.
Yes.
He's, he's changed, you know, something could come off the agenda or come on the agenda and now you need to declare, or you didn't need to declare, so.
I, I frankly, I like the way we have it right now. I personally think it'd be the same items. Just means, as I asked, I don't know, make sure you got my question.
I mean, I, I like separate item. I just think the order is off, because I, you know, because it takes something about the agenda to change, which would change at least seven.
Yep.
Makes sense.
So I think, keep, keep, keep in mind, you know. Something could get added to the agenda later on in the agenda. And it would still be the responsibility of somebody if there was a time to stay there at, at that one time. This, this is just a reminder point for what you've cut for. Right?
Right.
It still goes back to the exposure thing that's back to. It's up to all of us. If something comes up, or when you realize it, break it to less than much attention. Okay, so switch it to the enough then. That makes sense.
Um. I just thought of something. Staff reports, did we change, is that, does that drop them to the bottom? I'm like. We're gonna change them. Okay, because I feel pretty strongly that I want to hear from what staff has to say.
Still order.
All right, I'll be quiet.
Just don't lose all the vote to approve council rules one through sixteen as shown. Discussion to follow on rule seven.
And, and certain change of.
Can insert again after the episode.
Aaron?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Pleasant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. We're through our new business and. Comments. Zach will start with you.
I'd just say, uh, there've been a number of. I'd just say, uh, there've been a number of items these past three meetings that. May have been ripe for going to the street sidewalks and alleys committee, uh, two meetings ago, we had four items. Took maybe thirty, forty minutes, uh, we have the sidewalk ramp here, so I, I would be in favor of activating that committee, as it seems like we have a lot of the. Sidewalking alley issues coming up. Um, that's all.
I found it when I thought page one forty-nine is the packet, with Fisher's signature from nineteen ninety-six.
Well, I was, I saw that very same thing, and looked, looked in there, and then thought I had handwritten minutes, all cousins was in there too, so I too enjoyed that. No handwriting, thank you. Always, thank you.
It's been tough. We're saying we were all there. Sunda army. Granddaughter, those two have still been sort of a good company. But I just want to thank you for all your support. I'm still gonna need. I found it to really be a house. And we've been married sixty-one years and twenty-one days. A beautiful woman, Natalie. Visual. I've never heard her say one bad thing about anybody. Ever in my life. She was involved with the community. And, uh. Nineteen sixty-three, when I come here, we never thought we would have, like, we had a Dexter. But it happened then. And, uh, she's been home for a long time for both of us. Been involved in a lot of activities. And, uh, I know some of you that are new, never really got a chance to know Pat, but. She was one of the most loving. People in the world, as far as her community and the things that she wanted to see happen. I was a lot of the talk, but she was a quiet storm behind all. And, uh. Every time she'll probably break calm, but just give her a hug. Or kick in a pants or everything, and hey. Thank you all for all your support. We will have a. Always wanna have some kind of memorial at the library. On, uh, in the springtime, and, uh. If you ask any contributions, or any things you would like to make with this cultural library, that's where her heart was, it's been fifteen years of tradition.
Very, very sorry, very lost.
Thank you all.
Absolutely, unless you follow that.
I have nothing to say.
Don't be, it's good to see.
Oh, boys. Said, I asked, what do I want to do, I said, I think it'd be good to get out, so that's what I decided, this is the first one. And, and habits of that.
But you chose here to go out?
Yeah.
The other.
Well. People will tell you that, uh. All the times that Pat was in a health hospital, the first time that she had leukemia, and the, uh. Last time with the strokes. Until June the first, when we got her home, I would hit her hospital bed every day, never missed one. Many, many hours, sometimes, sometimes all night. People have recognized that. Said, well, it's because we love and support each other. And she would do the same thing for me. I know, I'm a question. Don't, we'll miss her. Dexter won't.
Excellent.
And she was employed at fifty. Dexter. Yep. Thank you all.
Not ranked, she was a good actress. Oh, I'm sorry.
He's not over there.
Doctor, not ranked for this meeting. Is there anyone online, or not, or is it just? Motion for.
So.
Moved and supported by. All those in favor?
All right. Justin? This makes me feel like this was, they're not a part of the meeting.